Three, two, one.
The news media has been notified and a copy of the agenda has been made available to the public. We do so via YouTube Sumter School District Board Meetings and Sumter School District's Facebook page. Mission: The mission of Sumter School District is to equip students to be responsible, successful, and productive citizens in a global society. Vision: Sumter School District develops and cultivates competitive students who embrace diversity, act responsibly, and contribute positively to society. The members of the board are Dr. Margaret Jackson, Area 7 Cheerwoman; Dr. Dave Frank Baker, C8 Vice Chair; Dr. Darryl McGaney, Area 5 Clerk; Mr. Brian Austin, Area 1; Mrs. Cheryl Ray, Area 2; Mr. Matthew McLeod, Area 3; Dr. Johnny Hilton, or John Hilton, Area 4; Dr. Gloria Rose Lee, Area 6; Dr. Sean Reagan, Seat 9; Mrs. Robin Mills, Deputy Director of Installation Support, Shore Air Force Base Representative; Dr. Penelope E. Martin Knox, our Superintendent; Mrs. Amy Hansen, our Administrative Manager. This meeting is now called to order. I want to take this time to welcome you to Furman Middle School. I would also like to thank Principal Michael Riggins and his staff for hosting this first meeting of 2022. Thank you, Mr. Reagan and staff. Two point one is the approval of the agenda. Are there any objections to the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Hilton?
Um, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion and an action item to vote on postponing a decision regarding approval or disapproval of the realignment proposal until next school year.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion, the request to amend the agenda, does not pass. Thank you. Yes, without any further objections, are there any further objections? If so, the agenda is approved. Are there any objections to approval of the agenda?
What a privilege, Madam Chair. At some point, will we be able to have a discussion on what Mr. Hilton just referred to at some point in the future?
I'm sure. But the agenda just didn't really get a second to it, so it was approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And hearing none, the agenda will stand true. Uh, three point one, the Board of Trustees is pleased to offer time on the agenda for public participation, both in person and electronically. At this time, we will open the floor not to exceed three minutes for each participant. However, we're going to have to deviate from the, uh, tonight. We have more than fifteen persons or fifteen individuals that have signed up or sent in requests prior to arriving. So, um, what we're going to have to do is give each person a minute. And if you don't finish, we're going to ask that you submit in writing to us the rest of your concern.
I would ask that to make a motion that would allow each individual to have their full three minutes to speak. If that's a little bit bothering.
Is there a second to that? You said?
Second.
You can't amend the agenda now because the agenda has been approved. Okay, so that being said, um, we would need to ask that, and I, some of you may be saying the same thing, so it may be that some of you may be able to do all of it. If you know that you're going to be repeating the same, very, very same thing, it may be that you will opt not to speak. So with the timeline and the number of persons that are asking for public participation, we're going to ask that you please cooperate with us. Okay, uh, thank you. Um, at this time, we will open the floor not to exceed the time indicated. Uh, following in-person comments, our Executive Director of Communication and Computer and Committee Engagement, Michelle Agathon, will read the electronic submission. Our first person to register is, uh, is Rosa Hilton. And, uh, she is speaking, uh, as far as concerned, as far as superintendent's position at this time. Mrs. Hilton, would you please come forward? Thank you. And just, uh, and the speaker is already on, so just, uh, state your, state whatever it is you need to say. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity and this time, since our time has been reduced to one minute, I will try to just get straight to the point. Um, as a concerned citizen in the Sumter community and as a mother of children that has attended Sumter School District, um, I'm really disturbed and concerned that we seem to not be able to get this thing right. Under Doctor Knox's tenure, I have seen Sumter School District move forward. And if the vision is for our children to be educating, empowering, enriching, and live, and live, I can't see y'all, my glasses on, um, enriching the lives of all the students to reach their full potential, then I, 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 I'm, I'm bewildered as to why the concept turnover. It seems that we had interim superintendents in place longer than we had superintendents. So as a community member, and we talk to one another in community. So I'm hearing that Doctor Knox is not a fit. I don't know what that means. If she's not a fit, I ask the board members, those of you on the board who seem to think that Doctor Knox is not a fit, what does that mean? What does that look like? Because if the vision has been established and Doctor Knox is moving forward at vision, I ask the board, those of you who feel she's not, what does that mean? How does that look? Why she's not? How she's not a good fit? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Our next speaker is, uh, Miss Sandra Burgess. Miss Burgess? And I think that she is superintendent being forced to resign her position.
Thank you so much for this time. I'm going to get straight to the point. Our children are watching. Our children are watching, each of us. The relationship between the school board and the superintendent is like that of a marriage. Not perfect, requires patience, sloful in speech and anger. Mutual respect for each other, okay to agree, to disagree. Meaning we inquire as to the board, why would they not state Doctor Knox's contract? Is the question. Rather behind closed door, if that was intent, a recognition given, why is it going directly to the, uh, media right away? I'm pretty sure if I were to resign, I wouldn't be going straight to the media. So if someone leaked it, and that's how we know about it. So we just want to know, why is her contract not being renewed? Or why is it not being offered? It's always the constant infighting of this board. It's always the same constant division. If you go to the website, it's always five-four, 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 five-four. Why? We're talking about somebody who has come into our community, brought us out of a $6.2 million deficit to where we are now at a $32.6 million surplus. Who hires somebody? We thought when we voted you all in, it was going to be a change. It's not. It's the same shenanigans that it was back in 2013, 2016. We're talking about somebody who has come in and fiscally made it financially possible for us to go on. As I said, in the school, thirty years ago, I served in the school, and it still looked the same. These are the issues we need to be discussing. Not betrayal and going behind each other's back trying to get rid of someone who has come in to our community, and now we're trying to kick her out. Who does that? And I hear all of the doctors. Doctors of what? Messiness? Five-four, five-four. That's all I hear, five-four. If our military can get behind her and bestow upon her the honorary command of Shore Air Force Base, the item has her on their advisory board. She has bridged the gap as far as communication is concerned. Why are we not concerned? We're going through the same thing we went back through in 2016. Are we going to try and repeat that again? Or we're going to have to have the auditors come back again? Is that what we're trying to do? Reverse time? Is it because she hired so many minority principals that were sitting there qualified in our district for ten, fifteen years, finally got a seat at the table? Five-four, five-four, five-four. No longer. As a, as a community and citizen, we are fed up with this board, and you're being divisive. You need to come together like a marriage and work it out. If not, you need to seek counseling.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Without doubt, you've already, Michael?
McMichael?
Mc, what is it?
McMichael?
McMichael.
Good evening. As I sit here tonight on behalf of my grandson, who attends a high school here in the Sumter School District, when the pandemic hit and our children were subject to go to virtual learning, like a normal child, he was very concerned. You know why? Because when there's change in children, it matters. Now, only my grandson excelled to maintain all A's for both quarters, but he stayed on the A and B toner road during the rest of the school term. That says a lot for implementing a plan to make sure that our children will receive the same education as in person. I was sad to read that Doctor Martin Knox was seeking, was not seeking employment again after the school term. It would be a mistake to lose a person who is not only qualified, but shows compassion for each and every student regardless of their ethnic background or social status. Please note that this is not an impact on the board. These are just personal opinions that we are allowed to speak on. My question to the board tonight, and some of you may have had this conversation with Doctor Martin Knox, has anyone reached out to find out exactly why she is leaving? It could be something personal. It could be something she doesn't want to talk about. But for those of you that have not had that heartfelt conversation with her, you may want to reach out this week. I have a degree in business administration, but I also have a degree in human resource management. And I can tell you as a manager, one of the biggest mistakes you want to do is to let someone resign, for example, a great leader, as Doctor Martin Knox, without truly understanding her reason for leaving. At least if you talk to her and ask those questions, you may be able to sleep a little better at night knowing. I did everything humanly possible as a board member to make sure that I didn't put everything just on plain politics by not considering the issue.
Excuse me, Mrs. McMichael. Would you, uh, minute this, uh, could you please submit that?
I will.
And we will gladly acknowledge.
Gladly. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next speaker is Doctor Cynthia Graham. Ms. Delcia Harper Baxter. Yeah, I guess he'll change in a few seconds. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chairwoman and members of Sumter School District Board of Trustees, Doctor Graham and I are addressing you as concerned citizens of Sumter County. As former district administrators with a passion, we want to voice our concern regarding Superintendent Doctor Penelope Martin Knox's announcement not to seek an extension of her contract. Since her tenure, she has demonstrated the importance of establishing a positive, dedicated relationship with students, teachers, and stakeholders, building on the focus, every student, every school, every student, every day, hashtag Sumter strong. She has displayed and continues to display commitment to our precious jewels, the students. Dedicated to her calling as superintendent, she has demonstrated confidence in making her decisions. Since consolidation, our school district has lacked consistency and leadership, specifically the superintendent position. Without consistency at the top, there was not consistency within the building level administrators, different beliefs and practices which led to inconsistencies in teaching, strategies, and best practices for meeting the needs of all students. I ask you to please consider letting her, um, seek an extension to her contract. She is leading with integrity, not incompleteness, seeks harmony, not divisiveness, compassion, not animosity, proficiency, not incompetency. She seeks and leads with a good heart, not intimidation, and puts our children first.
Amen. I will continue from where Mrs. Harper Baxter ended. It is hard to grasp that an educator so committed and passionate about our children's education, their social and emotional developmental needs, would just suddenly decide to leave during a time such as this, a time when we need her and our children need her the most. Doctor Martin Knox accepted the call to serve our children at Sumter School District. We encourage you to extend her the opportunity to continue as superintendent of our beloved Sumter School District. In other words, we are simply asking that instead of moving forward with a new superintendent's search, please consider a motion this evening to extend to her the opportunity to continue serving in this capacity. She made promises to move the district forward, and you made promises on behalf of the citizens of Sumter County to support her. Promises made, promises kept. Every school, every student, every day. Hashtag Sumter strong. Thank you. Our next speaker is, uh, Michelle Harrelson.
Good evening, um, board members, Doctor Martin Knox, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll introduce myself real quick. My name is Michelle Harrelson. I am actually a sixth grade ELA teacher here at Furman Middle. Love Furman Middle Indians. Uh, although this is my first year here with Sumter County, um, this is my seventeenth year teaching, I have many concerns for public education in the state of South Carolina, including the proposed bills with our state legislature that they will be meeting on tomorrow, um, that will be diverting $500 million from public education. I would encourage you as board members that are serving our district to stay, uh, stay at peace with those things. I know that Sumter School District received $23.5 million in ESAR funds, um, to get through, uh, this pandemic. Um, I would like to encourage you or propose that some of those funds be used for providing mental health and support for our children. I will tell you as a teacher, there's a great need for that. I'll give you a quick perspective. Here at Furman, we are on fifty-plus days of no related arts. That's fifty-plus days a child does not get banned. Chorus, agriculture, computer science, not given the equal opportunity every child deserves. It's not happening. We are down four certified teachers in this building. And after speaking with a bus driver, we're down ten plus drivers just in this area. Real quick picture, that means some of our children do not arrive to school until 10:30. They miss an entire block of learning. I just wanted you to hear perspective from what is going on inside these buildings. I thank each and every one of you for your time and service.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrelson. Our next speaker is Jessica McKinley.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jessica McKinley, and I'm here to show my support for Doctor Martin Knox and wholeheartedly ask that her contract be renewed. Not only am I heavily involved in Sumter School District as a volunteer since I'm the district's UCT president, but I'm also a parent of two students that attend Sumter Schools. Doctor Martin Knox's presence in the schools is astonishing. She is one of the most dedicated educators I have ever met. I have been working closely with her for going on three years now, so I can personally say that I have witnessed her in action. She is constantly visiting schools to obtain information regarding school conditions and future improvements. Not only does she acknowledge students, but she encourages them to do their best. She is do, also doing a wonderful job leading our schools during this pandemic. During virtual instruction because of COVID-19, she led evening readings that included various community members and leaders. I have many friends that are parents and friends that are teachers, and they have all expressed concerns over her contract not being renewed. She has heartfelt conversations with staff and acknowledges their dedication to students all over the district. She listens to parental concerns and always has the students' best interest in mind. Every student needs leaders like her to help and encourage them throughout their school years. I have read the school board's goals on Sumter School District website, and she works hard to achieve those goals. I am so proud to say that my children attend Sumter School District. We just need the truth. Thank you.
We're now down to Doctor Angela Frederick.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Much has been said, so I'll kind of start here in the middle. I'm here to voice my support for our superintendent. Since she's been here, it's been a short three years, um, but she has repeatedly heralded the fact that her priority is whatever is best for the children. And I think, as many have already said, she's demonstrated that over and over again. I like the fact that she was an outsider who came in to lead our, uh, district, not encumbered by the need to protect salaries of spouses or other relatives. I like the fact that she was not encumbered by the need to defend any bad policies or not encumbered by the politics to, uh, protect certain privileged constituents. I alone, with several others, think that our superintendent should be offered an extended contract as for her to accept or decline. I think if she, if she does accept it, that she should be allowed to lead in a non-toxic environment. Free of micromanage and free of some of the blatant disrespect that we have received, that we have observed from this leadership. That's right. We're asking that she, if she is offered and if she accepts, that she will have an environment that is supportive and encouraging, and encouraging so that our children can receive the best benefit from all of our efforts and certainly from her leadership.
Thank you, Doctor Frederick. Our next speaker is Elvira Washington.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I am just an ordinary citizen in Sumter County. Now, you need to hear that. We are very concerned about Doctor Knox's situation right now. We would like to keep Doctor Knox here. Some of you on the board don't need to be on the board. My neighbors, all over, and I have been discussing this. We are very disappointed. We would like to see the Sumter School District become a very good district. As Doctor Knox is leading us, I currently don't have any children in the school system. But however, I would like to see this situation resolved. Doctor Knox continue to do the work that she's doing, and you, some of you on the board, get on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Latkin.
Greetings and salutations to each and every one of you, and good afternoon. I'm so excited that you've given me the opportunity. I will not be before you long, but the numbers do not lie. The numbers, sir, the, well, what are you talking about, Latkin? 2004 embezzlement, 2008 embezzlement, 2018 fiscal caution, 2019 fiscal emergency, a $6 million deficit, and 2021, we're at a $32.6 million surplus. I'm grateful for the opportunity. I work in media, all that good stuff. We can think about that later. Google, you'll find it. But what I'm here to tell you is that our past is a place of reference, not a place of residence. We in Sumter County have decided to move on. We're moving forward. We have Doctor Penelope Martin Knox, she's here, and she's doing a great thing for this district. And it's just at a place and time where, I watched tonight, there were people who were coming up, and some of you won't even look them in the eye. You won't even give them a straight face to the head. You know what? I understand that you are passionate. COVID is out, and we all in the room together because we care about. COVID is out, and we all in the room together because we care about the children. So last but not least, we can't keep spending our money giving someone a chance who isn't prepared. She is prepared, she has shown that. And let me share this last thing. God does not sign off on personality, he signs off on work.
Good evening, Sumter School District Board of Trustees. My name is Travis Dalton. I'm a 2020 graduate of Crestwood High School and a proud product of Sumter School District. Today, I'm speaking to you all to request that you allow Dr. Penelope Martin Knox to remain in her position as superintendent of schools beyond this year. In my opinion, there are three defining character traits that set Dr. Martin Knox apart from other leaders, and these reasons are which you should encourage, that these reasons should encourage you to keep. The first trait that I've seen in Dr. Martin Knox is an empathetic leadership style. In March 2020, when Sumter School District announced its graduation plans, many of you may recall that I wasn't the biggest fan of said plans, and I made that clear to both you and Dr. Martin Knox. But rather than becoming frustrated and holding a project against me, Dr. Martin Knox invited me to have a discussion with her at the district office, and we were able to communicate in amicable manner. That's true leadership. She didn't allow one event to define our entire relationship, and that's a testament to her leadership style and character. The second character trait is her love for children. I'm reminded of an old quote that says from Rita Pearson, "Kids don't learn from people they don't like." Dr. Martin Knox always engages with students, and by doing this, she is advancing the mission of teaching and learning by showing students that education can and should be fun. And last but not least, Dr. Martin Knox has a bold vision. This vision can be seen in three different projects. Number one, the Sumter Realignment Project. Number two, the district's new proposed equity plan. And three, the development of a new mission statement. Now more than ever, we need your leadership. I want to close by saying, when I was a student in Sumter, I had the opportunity to meet and interact with many of you board members, and I have a great deal of respect for all of you. I do not write or speak to the board often, but when I do, it is about an issue that I'm extremely passionate about. For the sake of our children and their future, I am asking that you allow Dr. Penelope Martin Knox to remain as our superintendent. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reverend Alfreda Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Sumter County School District Board of Education, elected employment officials, superintendent Dr. Penelope Martin Knox, administrators, educators, parents, community members, and all other persons present tonight. I was truly saddened when I read the article in December stating that Dr. Martin Knox will not be returning after this current school year. What a heartbreak. We know that Dr. Martin Knox loves the children of this county. The contributions to the Sumter School District are innumerable, and the impact on the children she serves will long be long-lasting. Since her tenure here in Sumter, she has done nothing but good. Dr. Martin Knox's educational background, training, and experience were valuable in her preparedness for the role in which she currently serves, and they validate her competency to lead this district. Dr. Martin Knox also has proven that she can adjust and adapt to change, for she arrived in Sumter less than a year before a global pandemic. It has worked diligently to make decisions that take the best entrance of students into consideration.
Reverend Johnson, would you submit the rest of your call to the board, and we'll say we can consider it?
Yes, I surely will.
Thank you. We also have two additional persons to acknowledge that has submitted to our information to our executive director of communication and community engagement, Mrs. Shelley Gallagher. Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes, Gallagher.
The first electronic submission is from Carolyn Haley. As a parent, as a child in Sumter County School District, it's my pleasure to write a letter supporting superintendent Dr. Martin Knox. She is an administrator of the highest caliber. She takes an extra initiative to not only work toward the goals set by this board, but also to directly coordinate with parents to establish the best education outcomes for their children. Dr. Martin Knox cares about our children, their future in the Sumter community. She's a dedicated and genuine leader and educator. I support her continued tenure as superintendent. I ask you to search your conscience and use your knowledge of her exemplary service to reach the best decision for the students, which is continuing Dr. Martin Knox's employment contract. We must strive for these difficult and divisive times, seek the higher good, and pursue righteous choices. While your power affords you many privileges, please remember the trust that is given to you to responsibly use that power. The right choice may not, may not always be the popular one. I plead with you to use your choice to support the best way forward, keep Dr. Martin Knox. The second is from Carol Dickens Bundy. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed changes in leadership for Sumter School District. Unfortunately, in nine months to her tenure, the county, the country, was hit by a pandemic that impacted our lives and disrupted instruction for students, and this disruption continues to date. Our children have suffered academically, socially, and emotionally. Our focus at this juncture should be geared toward recovering and stabilizing our school system. A change in administration at this time will further aid our efforts to recovery. We must use our resources to undergird our current administration so that all stakeholders remain. Let's look back at our actions and supporting data to inform our current decisions. Consolidation of the district came in 2011. Since that time, we have had four changes in administration within 11 years. These changes have come with a big, with a high price tag, the cost to students and to taxpayers. The current administration has kept the focus on instruction, support of staff, and the maintenance of sound fiscal position. Let's stop the cycle of changing leadership on a whim because the data shows consolidation may have had financial crisis, and our academic standing has diminished. Let's put aside personal interests and make decisions that support improving student progress and utilize those tax dollars in a fiscal responsible manner. Let's get behind Dr. Martin Knox and support her as she works with the board, staff, parents, and students to make Sumter School District successful. And the last is from Cheryl Moyn. She's a former Shaw Air Force Base representative. First, Dr. Martin Knox is a woman and educator of amazing courage, for even applying to serve as our district superintendent after multiple years of leadership at first the inner school system. She arrived here in Team Sumter and hit the ground running to care for 3,000 staff members and over 15,000 students in 27 different schools. We should be spending this historic time celebrating and supporting Dr. Martin Knox and her plethora of accomplishments and milestones in the schools, community, Shaw Air Force Base, in the great state of South Carolina. Although there are many matters surfacing in regards to why Dr. Martin Knox may have chosen to lead the district, none of them rises to the level of an early departure without due process. One will presumably think the majority of the negative conversations on multiple platforms was totally focused on her. However, this is not the case. The board is preparing to possibly bring a fourth superintendent into the district in less than eight years. This is currently not healthy for our community and may add a lack of trust and transparency to the public's concerns. We are potentially painting a vivid picture that the next superintendent we hire into the crucial position will be flawless. I believe this time.
Yes, would you just submit that so that we can acknowledge your seat of it? Thank you. I'd like to thank each of you who really took time out of the schedule to be here this evening, and we do appreciate your input. And just know that you will hear back from the board as expeditiously as we possibly can. Again, we appreciate your being here, and we thank you for all of your input, and I'm sure that we will take into consideration your remarks. Thank you. We down now to the school board recognition, the board communication, and the sign of ethical principles and 10-year service award. January is school board recognition month, and during this first meeting of 2022, the board of trustees has an opportunity to review the South Carolina School Board member ethical principles. At this time, I will read these principles aloud and ask that our trustees sign the document. I will read these, read the document, and we change location, and the document itself is not here for signatures tonight, so we will have to do the signing at another time. You reflect on the importance of our unique role in championing and advocating for quality education. We are elected by the people. We represent the voices and visions of their public schools. The South Carolina Board Members Ethical Principles. As a member of my district's school board, I pledge my efforts to improve public education in my community, and we solemnly try to represent the intent of the entire district by making decisions and to rely on available facts and on our judgments rather than on individuals or special interest groups. Solemnly try to understand the proper role of the board to set policies governing the district and to hire the chief administrative officer to carry out these policies. Solemnly try to encourage and open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process. Solemnly try to seek regular communications between the board and students, staff, and all segments of the community. Solemnly try to attend all board meetings, to study issues facing the board, and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion of such meetings. Solemnly try to work with other board members in a conscious and courteous manner, befitting the public trust placed in the position of school board trustee. Solemnly try to communicate concerns and public reaction to the board policies and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner. Solemnly try to support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. Solemnly try to avoid conflict of interest and to refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. Solemnly try to encourage recognition of the achievement of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents. Solemnly try to support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. Solemnly try to take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the board or administration, and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act. Solemnly try to study current educational issues and to participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Board Association. And solemnly try to make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning. These are the South Carolina Board Members Ethical Principles. Thank you. At this time, Dr. Baker will announce and recognize the honorary for receiving the 10-year service award.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. It is indeed a pleasure for this school board to announce Sumter School District Chairwoman, Dr. Barbara R. Jackson, has been recognized by the South Carolina School Boards Association for 10 years of school board service. This year, 34 school board members from throughout the state will receive special lapel pins for reaching the 10- or 15-year benchmark. Another 18 will commemorate their 20th, 25th, 30th, 35th, and 40th year of school board service. Veteran school board members provide vision and valuable leadership for school districts. SC, SBA, and the local boards are happy to honor these board members for their long-term dedication to improving student achievement in their communities. In January 2022, in South Carolina, about 43% of the state's approximately 664 school board and affiliate board members had served four years or less, and about 26 had 10 years or more of board service. SC, SBA is a nonprofit organization serving as a source of information and statewide voice for boards governing the 77 school districts. Congratulations to Dr. Jackson on your accomplishment. And Dr. Martin Knox, we do assist with presenting this award, and I'm sure Miss Gallagher probably wants to give a picture.
And again, thank you, Dr. Baker, and thank you, Dr. Martin Knox. It certainly is an honor to be recognized this evening. Okay, we down now to 4.2, our announcements. Trustees, are there any announcements you wish to share at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on down to our legislative update. Dr. Hilton?
Yes, ma'am. I provide each board member tonight a summary of some legislative activity that's about to happen. The General Assembly will reconvene tomorrow, and upon that, any legislation that didn't pass last session is eligible for passage along with any bills that have been prefiled or introduced this month. A total of 47 new bills have been provided so far in the Senate, and here's a list of K-12 bills of interest that are on your handout. Several of them deal with vaccination status, not mandating vaccination, vaccination rights and such as that. And then some of it, there's another bill here that creates an education scholarship account for parents to fund private schools. In the Senate, there are some new leadership in the Senate, and there's also a COVID bill coming up in the House that prohibits vaccine mandates. And there's also a COVID bill coming up in the House that prohibits vaccine mandates. Another update came out today at five o'clock, and I didn't get a chance to type it up. But anyway, private school vouchers are coming up on Wednesday in the Senate. And that's always a concern, as one of our speakers brought up tonight. We need to keep our eye on the legislature regarding how they use public money for private interests. Thank you. That concludes my report. There'll be more later as the session is just starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hilton, for those ladies' updates. We're now down to committee reports. We will move to the committee reports. And I will report on the Citizen Advisory Committee. It is scheduled to meet on February tenth. The location is to be determined, will be determined. So you will get information, Citizen Advisory Committee members, as to the location of the meeting. Moving on down to the facilities, Mr. Reagan, do you have any report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We don't really have a report tonight, however, we've had a meeting scheduled for the fifth of January, but we're going to reschedule that meeting and we'll let the full committee as well as this board and subcommittee know. We are set to have our site visits as we continue that for the year 2022. And we're set to travel to Crestwood High School, Chestnut Middle School, and Crawswell Elementary. At this time, that concludes the facilities report.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan, Dr. Baker. Okay, we're now down to the finance report. Mrs. Ray?
There's no report at this time, and the next meeting has not yet been scheduled.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ray. Policy Committee, Mr. Altman.
Madam Chair, there is not a report this evening, but I will ask that the administration and members of the policy committee look at your calendars for available dates. As we have this spring, the equity audit and the first-ever equity policy in the district to implement as well as the continued work surrounding school resource audit groups in the open period.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. We are now down to the transportation study ad hoc. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. We will have a committee report as such, but we will have the update now from Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Okay. I don't think it allows me to read anyone. But that being said, we, Dr. Baker does mention that Mr. Crawford will provide an update to the board and head of the upcoming committee meeting.
Hello, I'm here, I can hear you.
Okay, hello, thank you. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Mr. Crawford is the consultant that the district has retained.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. Thank you for the chance to be here and give you an update tonight. Hope you all had a happy and safe and healthy holiday and get back to the new year on a good foot. I don't have a ton of information to share tonight. I just want to give you an update on what's coming up this Thursday. We are meeting with the ad hoc committee again at six P.M. this upcoming Thursday, and we are bringing forth two new options to consider and discuss. As you recall, we had public information sessions back in December at all three high schools, and they were well-attended. We had some very good conversations with members of the public around maps and talking with them about the maps that were being considered. At that time, we were sharing options one B and two B. Those maps are still on the table and still there to be discussed. But we have devised two new draft options to take some different perspectives and different looks based off of some of the things that we heard through the course of the realignment study. So this Thursday, we're going to be discussing some of the, having an open discussion with the committee about conversations that were had at the December public information sessions, and then also discuss options three and four, and then continued review and discussion of one B and two B. And we expect materials to be posted online. I believe they'll be ready by tomorrow. We will have all the handout and the maps and things like that posted online, and we'll make sure that we communicate those to the committee and the public so that people can continue to follow the process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Crawford, certainly do appreciate your attention and time to be here with us this evening and providing us with stuff here. That being said, we will look forward to meeting with you at six o'clock on Thursday. So thank you, and we have a great weekend.
You too, thank you.
Okay. We're now down to our superintendent's report. Dr. Martin Knox, please proceed with items listed under the superintendent's report at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good evening, Dr. Jackson, Vice Chairman Frank Baker, Dr. Baker, members of the Sumter School District Board, and members of the wonderful Sumter School District community. At this particular point in time, I'd like to reiterate to you something that Dr. Jackson mentioned a few moments ago. As Sumter School District will join districts throughout the state of South Carolina and throughout the nation to celebrate National School Board Recognition Month. The theme for this month is celebrating local leaders. Reminds us all to celebrate the unique role school boards play in championing and advocating for quality education and the ownership they take for governing their local public schools. So we'd like to take this opportunity to once again thank you for your dedication and service. I'd like to now turn my attention and give a shout out to Ms. Gabrielle Prozer from Hillcrest Middle School. I actually just saw Ms. Prozer the other day during a school visit to Hillcrest Middle School. And if you've not had the opportunity to observe her teach, it is an absolute pleasure, but we like to add to her credentials as she received her national board certification. So kudos to you, Ms. Prozer, for an outstanding job, for an outstanding person, for outstanding achievement. At this time, I'd also like to recognize Millwood Elementary School. Millwood's School Improvement Council has just been named to the South Carolina School Improvement Council Honor Roll for 2022. The Millwood School Improvement Council is now in the running for the Dick and Tommy Riley Award for School Improvement Council Excellence. So let's continue to cheer with Dr. Leach and his team to ensure that we provide them with ultimate support as they are moving through this endeavor. The winners will be announced later this spring. And the final component for the superintendent's report is information related to isolation and quarantining. While we're still trying to, two years since a month out, we're still trying to navigate through this state in called a pandemic, we are continuing to make adjustments to our guidance in the manner in which we respond to isolation and quarantining. So Sumter School District continues to navigate the challenges related to the pandemic in order to operate our schools in a safe manner. As a team, we've been in the process of refining our documentation for isolation and quarantine protocols, and we've received guidance, as we always do, from CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the Department of Health and Environmental Control, or DHEC, regarding our protocols that we must stay within those parameters. We received guidance regarding the changes on December the thirty-first, and we just met the other day, to update our community and our parents regarding our protocol. But then we received another adjustment on January ninth, and we received another one today. And so as we are continuing to adjust and I repeat, as we continue to adjust, adjust, to ensure the safety of our students, our staff, and our community, we ask that you provide us with some grace and patience. And we will make sure that we provide you with the most up-to-date information as it pertains to safeguarding our learning environment. I will ask, though, that in the midst of this, that if you are sick, please stay home. If our children are sick, please keep them home. If you have found the need to be tested, stay home until you get the results. And again, reminding you of our protocols in terms of safeguarding the environment by staying as far apart from one another as you can. And that's not just in school, but as we are outside of school, because oftentimes it comes back to school and then it begins to spread. And so we need to make sure our children are safe, we need to make sure our staff's safe, and we need to make sure that you as our community and our stakeholders are safe as well. So this concludes my portion of the agenda and the superintendent's report. Yeah, that's part. And that was my part that I finished. The applause caught me off guard. And so at this particular point in time, I have Dr. Kumus who will present to us. Dr. Kumus is the Chief Human Resources Officer, and he has been working very hard with our teachers and with our staff to try and make sure we have a calendar that's prepared for the upcoming school year. So, Dr. Kumus, would you please provide the recommendations at this time?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Martin Knox. Dr. Jackson, Chairman, Dr. Baker, Vice Chair, and other distinguished members of the board, thank you for allowing me to present tonight the traditional calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Our calendar committee met on December the first, and then we also met with the TAC Teacher Advisory Council on December the sixteenth. The committee was made up of volunteers, and some were asked to be on the committee so that we could get a good cross-section of teachers, councilors, parents, post-secondary representatives, and administrators who would represent the elementary, middle, and high school, concerns as well as folks from the district office to make sure that we considered the test dates and other avenues. The committee consisted of thirty-eight people. The committee really considered how the calendar would affect each level, and they were really a great group to work with, and I appreciate all of their hard work on these calendars. If you would, take a look at the calendar, please. If you notice the calendar, school will begin on August the fifteenth, and that's because you cannot start school until the third Monday of that year in August. Teachers will return on August the fifth for six days of in-service and workdays. And then we will start, need to start on that Monday, the fifteenth, to be sure that we turn on Friday. The next month is September, we will have September the fifth off for Labor Day, and then a half-day Staff Development Day on September the twenty-third. In October, a Staff Development Half Day on October the thirteenth, and the In-Service Work Day on October the fourteenth. November, Election Day is required on all even years and not required on the odd years. Therefore, November the eighth is an Election Day. We will also have Veterans Day off on November the eleventh. And then we will have November the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth for the Thanksgiving week. December, the winter break begins on the nineteenth and runs through the thirtieth, and we will return to school in January, January the second. When we return, we will have an In-Service Day following the exams on the thirteenth, and then Martin Luther King Holiday on the sixteenth. In February, there will be a half-day Staff Development Day on February the twentieth. In March, a half-day Staff Development Day on the sixteenth, and an In-Service Work Day on the seventeenth. Being as up to Good Friday in April, and the spring break, which will be April the seventh through the fourteenth. In May, we would have the twenty-ninth, Memorial Day. And then our last day for students will be June the first, and then we'll have an In-Service Work Day on June the second. We've counted and recounted the days. We have ten in-service days or workdays for teachers, and the committee believes that we are presenting the best calendar we can for the students and their families and all of our employees. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Hilton.
Thank you. Dr. Kumus?
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the Teacher Advisory Council minutes that there was a second calendar presented to the TAC that the district was considering that started earlier, it actually started in July and ended first semester before Christmas. And then the school year ended in May. And it was very interesting to me. I know that there are other school districts in the state that do have a similar calendar where their exams are done before Christmas. What happened to that option? Could you share some information regarding the discussion, perhaps regarding the other calendar option?
Yes, sir, I should again. The other option was called a modified year-round calendar. And you are correct, there are several districts around that are using that modified calendar. It would cut down the number of days during the summer break, which would address the learning loss during the summer. Then there would also be some breaks during the October and during the February one. When we presented to the calendar committee, we looked at, and we actually looked at Florence One, Herschel, and a couple of other districts that are using it. The calendar committee was tremendously in favor of using the calendar. We developed it, we took it to the Teacher Advisory Council. We had a lot of support from them, but a lot of the concern was that we were rushing it and that we weren't given time for parents and other stakeholders to weigh in on that particular calendar. And several folks asked if we could table it for this year and work on it more for the following school year. And at this point, that's what we've decided to do. That will give us ample time to get parent involvement, stakeholder involvement, post-secondary involvement, because it will affect them when they're offering the dual enrollment and some of the other things. So it gives us plenty of time to get all of those folks involved, and we wouldn't be rushing this calendar out. So it is something they're looking for in the future and looking towards.
If I may, thank you for that explanation. I think there is a lot of merit to the alternative calendar, having exams before Christmas, having less time in the summer, although, you know, everybody likes to have a long break, but children regress so much in the summertime. I hope we can move forward with this concept and perhaps even a more progressive concept of looking at a quarter system where kids go to school for nine weeks, and then they're out for a couple of weeks, and then they're in nine weeks and out a couple of weeks, so that we can diminish this break in the summertime. You know, we used to have to get out of school in the summertime to break corn and such as that, and not so many people are breaking corn anymore. And so as times have changed, I hope we can change our calendar for the benefit of our children so they don't regress so much in the summertime. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, this concludes the superintendent's report. Good evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Martin Knox, and thank you, Dr. Kumus, for sharing with us, updating us on the hour. We do appreciate that. That being said, we're now down to executive session. And I'd like to say, as we approach the executive session, portion of this meeting, I want to thank our staff and our members for attending and for participating tonight. And we do appreciate you being here. We hope that you will be here with us when we return to open session. However, if you must leave, please remain safe and travel safely. Trustees, is there emotion for entering into executive session?
Madam Chair, we enter into executive session for discussion of received legal advice, legal matters as it relates to candid, threatened, or potential claims, negotiations, testament, proposal, contractual, and our bunch of matters, individual student matters, personnel report, employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and our release of an employee, and personnel matters regarding superintendent's search.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you. There has been a motion and a second that we enter into executive session for discussion of legal advice as it relates to pending, threatened, or potential claims, negotiation, incidents, proposed contractual and/or property contractual matters, individual student matters, personnel report, employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee, and personnel matters regarding superintendent's search. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Okay, the motion passes unanimously, and the board is now into executive session again. I say thank you, and we welcome you. The board is now, has now returned to open session. Any action related to executive session items, eight point one?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the superintendent's contract by three years.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made to extend the superintendent's contract by three years, and second. Are there any discussions? No discussion? Please cast your vote. Oh, let me say the motion. Well, I did say the motion. Okay, please cast your vote.
Motion failed?
The motion failed. Okay. Do we have eight point two?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that this board allow the School Board Association to conduct a superintendent's search.
Is that under action? Any action?
Any action we need to do in the second session.
Another motion?
That's another motion. I can lift up another motion.
I'm sorry, what is the question?
I'd like to make a motion that this board allow the School Board Association to conduct a superintendent's search.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, it has been motion and second that the board allow the School Board Association to conduct a superintendent's search. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote.
Says four yeas, three nays. Says motion failed. I'm not sure about that, because there were two extensions, which mean no votes.
Four yeas, we need four yeas. You got four yeas.
There were two positives, there were three nays, and two extensions.
So the motion passed? You said four yeas and three nays?
Yes, two extensions.
Okay, we can't count the extensions. You got four yeas and the three nays.
Yes.
The motion passes, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't check out the extension.
Okay, count the extension.
It's not a vote.
That's a non-vote. That's a non-vote. Romans rule. The motion passes.
Four yeas.
You got four yeas. The motion passes for the School Board Association to conduct a search.
You can't count the, that's, that's a nay.
Okay.
Let's move forward. We've been here all night.
So what, what is the voting? Let's see the light, please.
The note was four yeas, three nays, and two extensions. Extensions are not votes. I know. It's not voting.
So we, the yeas has four.
Yep.
And the nays has three, and the extensions. It's two, two, two extensions. So the, the vote carries for asking the School Board Association to conduct a search. Okay, passes. All righty, we're now down, now down to student, individual student matter. Maybe have a motion, Dr. Dr. Martin Knox. What are your recommendations? Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. I ask the board to take into consideration and approve the individual student matters to transfer into Sumter School District as discussed in executive session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board accepts the superintendent's recommendation and approve the individual student matters transfers.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to accept the superintendent's recommendation for board approval of the individual student matter transfers. Is there any discussion? Please cast your vote. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. All right, personnel report. Dr. Martin Knox, do you have a recommendation for the personnel report?
Yes, ma'am. I ask the board to approve the personnel report as discussed in executive session.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, a motion that the board accepts the superintendent's recommendation and approves the January personnel report.
Second.
A motion has been made in second to accept the superintendent's recommendation for board approval of the January personnel report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
Amy, there's a come up on my, I'm here.
The motion passed. It passes. Okay, we're now down to eight point five, the 2022-23 district calendar. Trustees, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, we approve the district calendar presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the board approves the 2020, 22-23 district calendar. Is there any discussion?
I'm without a second.
Oh, you have any handup?
No.
Okay. Please cast your vote. The motion passes, am I right? Okay, the motion passes. All right. Eight point six, citizen advisory committee nominee. We have not had anyone to fill those slots, so trustees, is there a motion?
What would the motion be to table this for another time?
Yeah, that's the postpond action.
I'll move the postpone action on this to another meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second that the board postpones action indefinitely on the nominee for the citizen advisory committee to be named after application process is completed. Is there any discussion?
This is that the motion was to postpone?
Yes, sir.
That was Dr. Hill and Mr. McCloud?
Yes.
Please cast your vote.
Can we take a recess, please? Can we just like take a recess? We just need to take a recess. I mean, recess, please. I'm sorry, I just have to go.
Okay. You okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Did you get that, what was that name?
Yes, ma'am, unanimous.
Okay. The motion passes. Did we, did we vote again?
No, ma'am. You said that was to postpone indefinitely, correct?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Are there any objections to the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved, and to all of you that are here tonight and here, may you remain healthy and safe, have a wonderful week, and there be no further business. This evening is adjourned at 9:12. Thank you.